Okay, so I'm sorry we aren't going to be sending the Fledge of Allegiance. Could I have an approval of the agenda? We actually, with all of the talking in and out, we're leaving it as is.
No Fledge of Allegiance?
We can, um, do you want me to put?
If you want to bring, if somebody wants to bring a flag in.
We're breaking with tradition now.
No, in this room we haven't because we don't have a flag in here. Say it in the library, because there's a flag in the library here.
Do you want me to just tip, like, put one of these bits?
Yeah.
Sure, we can do that.
I think Brian's trying to find something. Maybe not.
See if there was one super close I could get.
Okay, we can say, Jody has another.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will again ask for an approval of the agenda as presented.
Don't move, this is Liz.
Thank you, Liz, second.
Sure, I'll second it.
Thank you. Sort of hard, okay. Any conversation or discussion of the agenda? Any additions or deletions? No, then I will take a vote then. All in favor of approving the agenda as written, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. And now we have public input, and we have a number of people that want to speak. The, um, there is a three-minute limit, and I will ask you to please finish up when you hit that point. Ken, you are up first.
Where am I supposed to go, right?
No, ask the nice man with the camera.
What?
At the table, okay.
Here I am. Can I just stand? Okay. So, a few days ago, we learned Maria announced that she was going to be stepping off the board. I guess it's not for certain exactly when that's going to happen just yet. Oh, I'm sorry, Ken Fredt from Wallingford, Happy New Year, everybody. And I want to speak to item 13 on the agenda. So Maria, I just wanted to make sure that I had an opportunity to extend my appreciation for all of your service to the Mill River community. Your even-handedness and your thoughtfulness and your dedication are models for board members everywhere. And I know that I speak for many, many people when I say you will be sorely missed, but also to wish you all the best in the future. But thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Thanks, Ken. Um, we have Christine Billings, virtual.
Hi, first of all, Happy New Year. And I do have to say, Maria, you really, I sent you an email. You really, you look people in the eye, you repeat what people say to make sure you heard them properly, and I appreciate the way you ran the meeting. And wherever you're going, whatever you're doing, I hope you continue those opening roads of communication. So, that was number one. Number two, I'm also calling because I'm speaking and referencing to a comment that BJ made about being frustrated and continually being asked about CRT within our district. Please understand that I've asked multiple times for there to be public board discussion on CRT, white supremacy culture, and the Foundation Against Intolerance and Racism. I've asked the full board to review the Pro-Human Foundation Against Intolerance and Racism offerings from equity programs to age-appropriate curriculum. I've even reached out to board members on the side to tell me what they find is not right with the Pro-Human approach. The only response I was ever given was Mr. Yount and Ms. Rock saying CRT is not being taught in the district. But have any of you actually researched the information I presented to you? That is the question I'd like answered. As for CRT at MRU, the actual college-level class is not being taught, but the essence is being spoon-fed repeatedly to the staff during in-service equity meetings, and these theories are being articulated into the classrooms. If it walks like a duck, acts like a duck, and sounds like a duck, then it's most likely a duck, even if you're calling it a partridge. For these reasons, I am frustrated. Again, I request the board to review and discuss the introductions that I have submitted to in public format so that the constituents of the community understand where each member stands on this critical issue. Thank you for your time. And again, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Christine. John McKenna?
Hi, I just wanted to say a couple of quick things. One is, I'm sure many people, like I did, received an email from Mr. Yount announcing that he will be leaving us, and I just wanted to say a very public thank you to him for all of his hard work. I don't think this district would be what it is now without his hard work during the merger discussions and all the work that we did prior to forming the district. And he will be missed. And also, Maria, you will very much be missed as well. I absolutely wish you luck with everything that you're doing. You have a lot on your plate, and while I wish you would be able to stay, I understand your reasons, and I wanted to say good luck. And the last thing I want to say is that a lot of people have been talking at these meetings and on social media and in the newspapers about complaining that the school board never does anything but talk about flags and talk about CRT and whatever else. And, you know, I just want to point out that the board does a lot of work that isn't as public as some of the other things that they do. There've been a lot of buildings and grounds projects that have gone on. There've been budgets passed every single year. The budgets take months and months of hard work to put together and to present to the board and to voters. Policies have been adopted, people have been hired. There's a lot of work that's being done by this board, and I think they're doing a difficult but worthwhile job in a very difficult climate, and I think they've done a really good job. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for everything that you've been doing.
Thank you, John. Mark Billings.
I'm Eric Billings, I'm from Shrewsbury. Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about the elephant in the room. That is the free fall of our test scores in the last 10 to 15 years and our place in the state of Vermont as far as high school goes. I'm just wondering when that's going to get turned around. Now that we seem to be heading into a new administration, we have the opportunity to find a leader who can give us this, these abilities. Just wanted to make sure I had your attention.
No, I'm writing down notes, thank you.
Oh, it's all on video.
I know, but I don't watch it again.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, this, let's try and, let's try and learn from our past mistakes. I mean, John just got up and he said how hard that our previous administrative, Mr. Yount's, works. Well, you can work all hard you want, but when our test scores are in a deep dive and his hard work has got us down to the bottom five in the state. When his administration started, we were in the top 50% of the state in high schools, and now we're at the bottom five? Now, there are some people who are going to, who are going to say, well, those aren't the real, real test scores, and that's not a proper way to do it. The state of Vermont says this is how we're going to grade yous, the schools. And I would beg to differ, this is a proper way, because we can call it the top 10. We can call it Stowe, we can call it South Burlington, we can call it CBU, we can call it Mount Mansfield, and I'm pretty sure all those schools will agree that this isn't a bad way to test, because they're continually in the top 10. Now, this, in the last 15, or the last 15 years, we have done nothing but go in a deep dive. You put it on a graph, and it just looks like this. When is this going to stop? There's no flattening the curve. There's no nothing. It's just a deep dive. We have the ability to now. Now, when you went ahead and you hired the current, Mr. Yount, Mr. Yount, the current superintendent, you must have had some values and you must have had some thoughts about what you wanted to have the superintendent do for you. You might want to stop and rethink that, because whatever you thought you wanted, you either got spoon-fed and you ate it, a bunch of, a bunch of, you know, malarkey, or you might want to stop and rethink about it, because he did absolutely nothing. He did not raise our test scores up. He did not improve the relationship between the community and the schools. We are losing, we are hemorrhaging, hemorrhaging tuition students, and we're also hemorrhaging students who live in the district. They're leaving. And when they leave, they don't leave for any, there's no good about why they left, just like a divorce. Most of this has been there. There's very little that you see good at the time you leave. And I'll tell you what, if my kids are in school and this school is doing this, they'd be out too. They are out. My wife homeschools them, and we put up, we put up a lot for that. So, when is this going to stop? And when are you, when are you, when are the people who are going to elect this guy or hire this new superintendent, are they going to actually stop and think about the decisions they made prior when they hired the last one and wonder, maybe those are the wrong values that I put on that man? Maybe I have to look at something different? It says right here, describe the model classroom. Ownership. Who's going to own these test scores? Who owns us? Accountability. Who's going to stand there and say, it's me? The guy who should be standing there saying it's me, where's he going? And remember, he told me right to my face that he cared more about our students and our community than I did. And where's he going? A two-week notice in the middle of the school year? He's packing his bags and heading down the road? Where's that? That's called accountability? No, he's running. Maybe he knows that we are now at the bottom. We're not number five anymore at the bottom, but maybe we are at the bottom. So please, as a board, you go to, you go to hire somebody, an intern superintendent or a real superintendent, stop and think about it. Because anybody in the current administration that's in there right now has got no ownership or no accountability, because nobody's standing here saying, you know what, it's me. The curriculum is wrong. It's wrong. We haven't, we haven't focused on math, we haven't focused on reading, we haven't focused on social studies. The problem these people have is I came here, I was here in '85, '82 to '85, all right? This school was, this school was, if I remember correctly, Lenny, then we, we didn't even have to get accredited those years, did we? No, they bypassed it, we were so good. We were top in New England, in New England. We sent, we sent our teams repeatedly to state championships, playoffs, Stage 40. Stage 40 was revered on the Eastern Seaboard. Where is it now? You know, we used to have, we used to send dozens of kids to all New England band and all New England choir. Where are they now? Do we have one? We can't even get enough kids to go in for a marching band for Halloween parade. Why is that? Maybe this, maybe this board should be looking at that. Those are hard questions, and they aren't fun to answer. Believe me, I've been there. I've had to answer myself. Look inside myself and answer them. All I ask is that you do the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Billings. We now have a period of time if anybody would like to make any comments on the board.
I know of a new student coming into our district that I would like to say welcome.
Thanks, BJ. I mean, I would hesitate to say that our music program is still highly represent, or respected. I believe Stage 40 is highly respected. I'm not going to, you know, touch every, everything you've said, but I don't agree.
You, you didn't.
And I'm not having a conversation. I'm responding, and that's it.
You don't agree with any of it, or?
No, I, I think that, you know, there's, there's ebbs and flows in schools, and I think there are always some issues in lots of schools. My kids went through this school, and, and they all got excellent educations. One son has, has a bachelor's degree and a master's and an MBA. The other son has his bachelor's in engineering. The third son is working on his forever bachelor's, but they all were educated in this school, not having graduated that long ago. But thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll go back with Kristen. I did read FAIR fair. I did read what you sent out, and I see nothing wrong with the program.
I will say, Bruce, I also read through the, the information that I could find online and was submitted to us.
Yes, I'll just, you know, speak up and say, you know, certain areas of our school definitely could use some improvement. Some areas probably are all set. I mean, it wouldn't hurt for us to do a review of everything on an annual basis just to see where we're at. Speaking from my own experience, I have a child in this school district that's special ed, and I believe that our special ed department is excellent. I have no complaints there, so, that's from my own personal experience, so.
Adrian, could I say two quick things? So, I want to say to the full board that it is the.
Can I ask who you're at?
Sure. My name is Jody Surtreck. I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Equity.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, you know, I want to say that it is, it is the work of all of us together to make sure every single kid is seen, appreciated, challenged, and supported. I want to say that every educator in the district is working through PLCs this year, where we collectively come together in small groups, working on looking at data, looking at interventions, looking at school-wide data, looking at, looking at our personalized data, doing reflection, designing in-classroom interventions, trying them out, and then coming back to our peers and talking about what worked and what didn't. And I do want to say to Mr. Billings that I do believe that it is my job to own all of the data and to work harder every single day in my greatest capacity to make things better. I, I will, I do.
You can refer to it all you want, but when the results are, are this, you might want to stop and think about how, how it worked, how, how, how you actually worked.
So, I will say to you that until.
Milton-Sandcastle is on the, on the edge of the ocean.
Excuse me, we're not having conversations back and forth, thank you.
It is important to us that we meet every student's needs.
Excuse me? This is. She directed her comment to me.
Adrian, this is Crystal, and I was hoping to speak.
Yeah, I was letting board members speak first, and then I'll call on the, the two people that have their hands raised in the audience.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything that they want to respond to?
Liz.
Oh, Liz, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's all right, I just put it up. So, good evening, my name is Liz Bilsko. I use she/her's pronouns. I am a board member from Wallingford. I would like to call everyone's attention to the fact that one of the greatest predictors of not, you know, doing well on standardized testing is poverty, and we have very high poverty in our towns. And so I think it's really important that we are mindful of that when we have these discussions, and that's all I want to say about that.
Thank you, Liz. Are there any other board members that want to speak? Stephanie and Crystal, you, you can have a limited comment. You didn't raise your hand to, to speak during public comment, but I'll allow you to ask a question. Crystal, first.
Yeah, I actually sent an email to be added to public comment. I thought we could do that the same as if we were in person, so I do have a statement to make.
It was after the cutoff time, Crystal. Is it a very short statement, because we're, we're moving on?
Okay, well, I'll just say I disagree with Liz's comment to begin with. I don't believe we're a high-poverty town or district. I think there are many, many districts that experience more poverty than, than our children do. I sympathize with Mr. Billings. He is passionate about what he is saying, and I think that's wonderful, Adrian, that your children excelled and did, did great things after graduating Mill River. But we've stated again and again that we have academic and athletic concerns, and we can't get these concerns on the agenda. A few weeks ago, we had several members of the community speak in regards to our equity and, you know, inclusion and how well we're doing there, and I would just really like to see that same effort put forth in our academic and athletic areas.
Okay, thank you.
We're not seeing that. You can interview our children. Ask the children at the schools how they're feeling. They're not feeling good. My daughter's going to do early college next year because she's not feeling school spirit. She's not feeling any benefit of staying in Mill River for her senior year. And to me, that's really sad. So, I also thank Maria for her time on the board. She runs a very good meeting, and, and I do appreciate all that, that you all are doing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Stephanie, do you still have your hand up? I'm sorry, I don't see it.
Yeah, I took my hand down, but I, I did want to speak, and I sent in an email late, not realizing that there was a timeframe that we needed to respond by. I worked late this evening, and so I was hoping to make a comment.
If it's short, go ahead.
Okay, so I do want to thank Mr. Yount for the meeting, for the December 15th meeting where he did explain the COVID guidance with regards to what was, what was the school's responsibility and what was that of this state and federal government. And so, I do want to say, as a parent who had two children sent home today due to being a close contact, I want to just make people aware that the CDC guidance, and therefore our school guidance, has changed since last week. And, and I was not very clear on that, but last week my children were fully vaccinated. This week, they are not considered fully vaccinated. And so, when they were sent home, there was no discussion of a test-to-stay option. And so, I know COVID update is on the agenda, and I'm hoping to hear about whether or not the testing to stay is an option for families and if students that are in, in the situation such as my, my children would be able to opt in for that in a relatively quickly, a quick option so that they do not miss school. So, while they have their assignments, they are not getting in-class instruction, and so for these kids, it could be missing a whole week, five days or more of in-class instruction, which I think is really important. The other thing that was brought to my attention is that kids are in the final stretch of their semester and therefore may need an extension if they are out due to this, this change. And so, so that is, that is the biggest concern that I have, that everybody really understands that the guidance has changed, which is really interesting, because if you go to the CDC website, they still have conflicting information. In one place, it says that you are completely vaccinated if you have your initial series, and then, of course, this guidance that came out this week is different, so requiring the booster. So, I just would love to hear some comments about that. And then I just want, I guess what I'll do is I will hold off on the other, the other issues. I just wanted to say that I do have concern as well about the school safety issue that occurred in December. So, I think we, I would love to hear continued discussion about what happens when there is a potential threat in the school and how the school will respond to that and, and what communication is possible through the phone system. I was alerted that there was concern by, by my students. I tried to call the school and was not able to get through, and that is really alarming when your students are in school panicking. So, I would love to have discussions about that and hear more about what the school will do in those situations, or does do in those situations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. We are going to move on to approval of minutes from 12:15, 2021. Can I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Maria. As a second, people here. Two.
Sam said.
Oh, okay, I can't. Hi, Sam. You know, you have a dark glove on, and it's hard to see. Use your un-glove hand.
Sorry, only one hand has the arcturist flare up today.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, have your good hand then. Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any corrections or additions or contractions from the agenda, or from the minutes? Nope, seeing nobody. I will call the question. All, everyone, an approval of the minutes of 12:15 as presented, please raise your Okay, thank you very much. Is Stan here tonight? We have the FY23 announced tuition rate, or, Brian, are you handling that, or Jody?
He's here, he's popping on.
Oh, okay. I didn't see, hi, Stan. I didn't see your name. Should have looked for the really long one.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
What, uh, where are we doing first?
Right now, we are doing the announced tuition rate. You can start with the elementary, I guess.
Okay, um, we need to set our tuition rate for FY23 per state regulation by January 15. So, on the elementary tuition, I would recommend setting the rate for FY23 at $16,008.15, which is a $65 increase over this current year's tuition rate or a 0.39% increase. Would you like to do the motion just on the elementary? I should do the high school also.
I think it's fine to do them together.
Okay.
If there's a question, we can separate them.
Sure. With the high school tuition rate FY23, I would recommend setting the rate at $17,006.25, which is a $1,025 increase over this current year's rate or a percentage increase of 6.17%.
Okay. Is there any discussion from board members needing explanations, any, anything else?
I guess, just a question, Stan, can you go into a little bit more detail in terms of, I mean, like, for the high schools, 6.17% is a pretty hefty hike. A thousand, if I'm a parent who's thinking of sending my student to Mill River, and it's going to cost me $1,000 more than it did last year, that might have an impact on, as to whether I send them there or not.
Don't forget, parents don't pay.
Well, that's true.
Okay, just, I mean, we do all together, but.
Yeah, that's good. I appreciate that.
Pointing out the fact that that, that's not individual cost.
Like I said, this would be a recommendation on my end.
Yep.
It's a template the state gives us to try to calculate our, what our tuition rate, based on the best estimates that we can do. It's based on the number of students that we're estimating for next year, so it's a, it can be, it is just an estimate, so it would be a board, a board decision, whether or not they wanted to lower that number in regards to, you know, the number that I'm recommending now. It's not a, it's not a fixed number that you have to go with what I'm recommending. This is just based on a calculation that I have done, based on the number of students that we are expecting for next year at the high school, and of course, as everybody knows, we have had a, you know, a 10% drop in the number of students of this current year, which is the reason why we're seeing such an increase. which is the reason why we're seeing such an increase for this upcoming year. That's figured into it.
Does anybody else have any comments?
Thank you, Stan.
Stan, does your motion, the motion to approve these have to have any particular format?
No, just to separate the numbers. Just to approve the numbers.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I can make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
And just, was it Len who was asking those questions?
Yes.
I can't see.
Yeah, it was.
Okay. So I don't know for certain, Len, but I suspect, and Stan, you can probably answer this for us. I suspect that part of the increase is due to the Act 173 change in the way we fund special education. I think moving to the census-based funding had an impact on those numbers. Stan, would you say that that's true?
Actually, not in the calculation. This is just based on regular education expenses. Special education is not figured into it.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that. So I would move that we, and Stan, correct me if I got the numbers right or wrong, please, set the elementary tuition rate at, was it $16,815?
Correct.
And the high school tuition rate at $17,625?
Correct.
For the, this was FY23?
Yes.
For the FY23 school year.
Thank you, Liz. Is there a second? Thank you, Doug. Okay, I will call the question unless there's further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the proposed elementary and high school tuition rates? Please raise your hand. Bruce, oh, yes, you have your hand up. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. We have a board resolution for bus lease. I suspect that's also you, Stan.
Doug will be happy that we will be receiving, or we're expected to receive, two new buses next week. Right now, we are trying to get the financing together in regards to purchasing those buses. What we have to do is we have to get a resolution from the board accepting the lease with the leasing company. I actually asked for two motions. One motion would be to accept the lease, and the other motion would be to authorize the superintendent or his designee to sign the lease. I can read what we're looking for in the motion, if you would like.
I think that would be very helpful. Thank you, Stan.
So, like a motion to approve entering into a master installment purchase agreement with Mercedes-Benz Financial Services for the purpose of purchasing by a financing contract the two Thomas buses, a cost which will not exceed $180,222.
Okay. Would somebody like to make that motion, please? Doug has made that motion. So do we have a second? Yes, thank you, Liz. Do we have any other comments on the first motion to accept the lease as presented in cost? I'm assuming that $180,000 is for two buses, correct?
Correct.
Just clarifying. It is Mercedes-Benz financing, which made me, threw me off a little bit. They are not Mercedes-Benz buses. Just so that everybody knows. Okay. If there's no further discussion, do we have approval for the acceptance of the lease for $187,000? Please raise your hand. Okay. Thank you, BJ. Okay. And now the second that you need, Stan?
The second motion would be for the board to authorize the superintendent or his designee to sign the lease.
Okay, thank you. Would somebody make that motion? Thank you, Sam. And Liz is seconding. Is there any further conversation or discussion on that? Otherwise, I will call the question that we authorize the superintendent or his designee to sign the lease when it's presented to him. Please raise your hand. Okay, we're good. Thank you. Is that all you need, Stan?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Daily substitute rate is on here, and I'm not sure who is.
Jody.
Okay.
Yes, I am. So because of the federal increase in minimum wage, it's necessary for the district to increase our daily substitute pay to ensure that we're aligning with that federal requirement. The current daily support staff fee is $90 per day. The current daily teacher pay is $105 per day. In order to meet minimum wage requirements, it's suggested that support staff be raised to $95 a day for substitute pay and teacher be raised to $110 a day.
How many hours is that predicated on?
So it's different for the two contracts, right? So it's, I think it's 6.5 or 7?
Okay.
It's 7.5.
7.5.
Okay. It's just out of curiosity. Okay. So basically, $5 apiece. Are we, beyond just complying with minimum wage, are we still having, I mean, I know everybody's having trouble finding substitutes, but...
It is still a significant need here. It is a barrier, for sure.
Do you know where we are by comparison to the other districts around us? Because, I mean, it seems to fluctuate. When people get desperate, somebody raises the rate really high, and then the rest of us catch up eventually.
So it does fluctuate. I don't have the numbers handy. I could present, compile and present what I can find at the next board meeting. You know.
How about we approve these, but you bring us where we are to see whether we can up the number of subs we can get? Since it seems to be a constant...
Other districts are having problems as well.
Oh, I know they are. But you know how somebody always tries to come out on top?
Yeah.
So where, you know, where are we in the pay range? Okay. I will entertain a motion to change the support staff substitute pay to $95 and the teacher substitute pay to $110. Would someone like to make that motion?
Sure.
Someone, Adrian.
Okay. Doug made the motion. Liz, did you say you seconded?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure. Is there any further discussion? Is everybody okay with asking to see where we are in the scheme of things? Okay. But we should do this now, because we don't want to be out of compliance. That would be a bad thing. Okay, then I will call the question. All in favor of those two pay raises? Please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Bylaws review. I'm trying to, it is 7:30. We're actually on time. And it's not a little bit ahead of time.
And I've got the bylaws up on the screen for folks to, if they want to check it out. I believe we're down to Roman numeral five. And we've got about 15 minutes on the agenda at this point to try and look at sections five, six, and seven. And I don't mind, if folks are comfortable, I'll capture what you're talking about as notes and read on the document, unless anybody else really wants to do that themselves. You want to do that, Len?
No, I have a question.
Yes?
I didn't think we were up to number five.
I'm just reading off the agenda.
Yeah. I don't think we finished. I think at our last meeting, we were discussing committees.
The last edit's on B, so maybe somewhere in four.
Yeah. Because we had just started talking about committees and who could vote on the committees and who could not. And then we didn't get down to E, the committees themselves, which I think we need to do. Because, because we do, because I have some questions there as well.
Great memory, Len. Thank you.
Okay. So where do you think we left off? Len, I didn't have...
Right around here. Yeah. If you remember, we were talking about the board chair's role at the committee level.
Since I will no longer forever be chair, I can say this. I think on a board that is, I won't say casual, but relatively small in a small organization, that I would feel more comfortable allowing every member to be on a committee that they choose to be as a full member. But that's just me.
Well, and I disagree, partially because we adopt Robert's Rules of Order for small boards. And in that, they talk about who can vote in the committees.
Unless they adopt something separate.
Correct.
That was what I was going on.
Okay.
That I was hoping we would adopt something different. I agree with you on Robert's Rules.
Okay. So again, I guess I have a problem with saying, well, we'll follow Robert's Rules of Order most of the time. But if we choose to change it, we can. And the other thing to keep in mind is that if you make a change like that to these bylaws, once we get all these changes done, these bylaws have to be warned, come before the full board, and approved by a three-quarter majority.
Correct.
Okay. I'm just...
No, you're right.
Putting that out there. Yeah, I know.
Len, I want to continue that discussion just a little bit. So the way it stands in Robert's Rules, I'm just trying to correct my mom, the chair basically can't be a member of, can't be a voting member of any committee? Is that the way it...
Unless they're the chair of that committee, or unless they're already on the committee. In other words, I chair the personnel committee. Anybody, any board member can come to a meeting of the personnel committee.
Yeah, any board member can come.
Absolutely.
Talk about the voting.
Right. And it's my understanding, based on what I've read in Robert's Rules, that not all the attendees can vote.
Which, okay, that I get. But I think the question then is, is the chair allowed to be a voting member of a committee?
Only if we change the bylaws and don't follow Robert's Rules of Order.
I would like to bring up, though, that Robert's Rules of Order specifically says you can change in your bylaws. So it's not not following them. It's following the alternative that Robert's Rules grants us. That would be my only comeback on that.
So, yeah, where I don't feel comfortable is, I don't feel comfortable taking any member, just because they're the, just because they're chair, and saying, "You have no rights to vote in any committee anymore." I'm not comfortable with that. Maybe, and not, I understand not all the committees, but I don't agree with that part of it.
And I'm not saying that the board chair should not be able to vote at all. That's in any of the committees meetings. That's not what I'm saying. I'm simply saying that if you make change, then the board chair also has an impact on the quorum of that committee. Since they're an official committee member, that impacts what a quorum is. And so I don't know how many committee meetings have been canceled because there wasn't a quorum. But that's another piece of it in my mind. And I'm just saying, I'm not saying, "Don't change it." I'm just saying, understand how it all comes out in the end and what we're going to need to do if we decide to change it.
Could we compromise? And I don't agree, I mean, that board chairs should be on every committee. And I'm not suggesting that. Although, I mean, board chairs usually are interested in almost everything and come to a lot of committee meetings.
Yep.
But I do think that, actually, what you are saying is that a board chair can't be a member of a committee.
That's not what I'm saying.
But if, but you just did. You said if a board chair is a member of the committee, it changes the quorum, and you don't necessarily agree with that. So could we say that a board chair could be a member of a committee as in every other member? And if we have a five-member committee, if the board chair wants to be on there, one of the five? Not that they're a sixth member. They're not a special level. They're just...
No, no, no. I understand that. Here's my point.
Yeah, I'm not understanding.
Okay. There's a committee of five people.
Right.
Okay? The board chair and anybody can attend.
Correct.
Everybody's free to attend. If you make the board chair an official member of that committee, then that can impact the quorum.
Couldn't they be one of the five, though?
Not necessarily. The board chair is not a member of my personnel committee.
No, but I could be if I wanted to be a member of, at the beginning, at our organizing meeting, when everyone says, "I'd like to be on the, this committee, this committee, and this committee." I'm not sure where in the way you're thinking, where the board chair can say, "I'd like to be on that committee."
I'm not saying they can. I'm not saying that. Okay? If someone wants to be a member, not just a board chair, but if someone wants to be a member, a participating member of five committees, they can. We keep, I wouldn't deny anybody the opportunity to serve on a committee. And if they are members of that committee, then they can vote, and they count towards a quorum. But that needs to be done when we do our reorganizational meeting.
Okay. I wasn't suggesting that the board suddenly become. I'm just clarifying my position. I wasn't suggesting that the board just suddenly says, "Hi, I'd like to be, you know, here." I think we need to keep a watch on who is on our committees.
Yep.
And I'm just saying that the board should have, a board chair should have the option at the reorganization committee of saying, "I'd like to be on the, this committee. I'd like to be on that committee." Or, "Hey, I'd like to be on every committee as a real member."
Yep.
And that doesn't seem to be the case now. That is not, it is how we are acting. It is how we are acting, but it is not in our bylaws that way.
Can I say something? My hand's been up for a while.
Sure. Yeah, you know, Bruce, I'm very sorry, but since the screen has the committee information on it, you're not showing. I'm very sorry. Please speak up, anybody who needs to speak, because I don't see anybody.
Hi. I just want to say, during the break, I did a lot of research. I looked at about 30 or 40 districts. And some of them actually had chairs can't be on any committees. Two of them I found said they can be ex officia members of all the committees, and they had to go. But most of them did just what we did. And the board chair can, we were told, pick two or three committees and be on those committees. That applies to the board chair also. The board chair can pick two or three committees and be on those committees, be a voting committee member. And if we put the board chair ex officia, the board chair could be on the committees. It just can't count as part of the quorum. And looking at our, we only have two committees with three people in them. And what brought this whole thing up was a policy committee, I believe. And if you look at our policy committee, we have six people on that. I think BJ and I were the only two there. So doesn't it take a majority of members to make a quorum?
Yeah.
So even if the board chair was there, that's only three. That's not a quorum. I just don't want to get into a situation. We have three members on a board, I mean, on a committee, and two of them are gone. And so the board chair, whoever that is, and one committee member makes decisions because the other two committee members don't happen to be there. And they may be more aware of that. I don't know. You know, I don't have any problem with the people going to be. I don't have any problem with the board chair being on. That's committee members.
Can we look at the language in our, because I think, I mean, everybody seems to be sort of talking around the same thing. Yes, the board chair can be a member of the committee, but they have to sign up for it, along with everybody else, at the beginning of the year. Or, you know, at reorganization, which is how I understood we were acting. Or, or, you know, at reorganization, which is how I understood we were acting. But I'm, I'm not sure that's what our, our bylaws say, and that's where I'm confused. Because if I'm not on a committee, I understand completely that I can't make up a quorum, neither can anyone else.
Right.
You know, I mean, Matt, or if Len comes to a negotiations committee, he can come, but he can't vote.
Right.
And that's fine, because he was never signed up for that committee. And I understand that. We have probably been a little loose on, on allowing people to join committees where they thought they were actually joining committees, not at reorganization. And maybe that's where we're losing the, the gist of this.
Yep.
Is that, is that the case?
That's what I believe.
Okay, so we're, we're all sort of on the same page, we're just using different ways of putting it.
Yeah.
And is that the language to be added to clarify, that members will be set at that reorganization meeting?
I don't, I think it somewhere states that in our reorganizational meeting.
Right, that we make the minute.
The committees are listed.
So it doesn't need to be in the bylaws?
No, I think, I think if, if...
So is there a language change in this section, or?
I'm not sure. I mean, I, I think, is there an option for someone to say, hey, I've become interested in the finance committee, can I be a member of that committee? Do we need to wait for the, for the reorganization of the next year? Or could we formally have, if somebody wants to be a member of a committee, could we add it to the agenda and say, this person would like to add, join that committee? Is that okay? Is that something that we would be agreeable to? Not just somebody showing up at a meeting and voting. Because that's not right. If you're on the committee, then you vote. And if you're not on the committee, then you can speak, you can, you know,
Yeah.
participate, but you can't vote.
Well, and I, I guess I would be okay with that, because then you're not changing the bylaws. I'm leery of changing the bylaws a lot, because, you know, they purposefully limited the bylaws. The bylaws, I should say, the bylaws are very limiting. And they did that purposefully.
But we should make sure it says what we, we've just been discussing. So how about we read them and make sure that that's actually what they say?
Read.
How, how committees are formed.
Page, page four, section E. I don't know that it disallows that.
No.
I know we're not there yet, but I also want to point out that the standing committees, I would really like to include in community engagement, because I don't think that that stands as an ad hoc committee with a finished date. I feel like it's something that's continual that the board needs to work on. So if we were going to make one major change to the bylaws, I would propose that that be one.
Okay.
And I'm okay, I don't mind moving on. I mean, we're not going to solve this tonight, I don't think.
No, but it's a question that'll keep coming up, so we might as well work on it. I mean, we don't have to go through, we can use our fifteen minutes, and when we're done, we're done. How's that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I just think, just throwing in to jump a little bit back to the issue of when people can join, we also should have a provision for if somebody is, you know, not just at March. Because, for example, if somebody, I don't know, resigns from the board early and steps down, and a replacement needs to be appointed, we also have to have something in place if we're enumerating how somebody gets on a committee, that that also may take place in such a circumstance, if we're being...
Yeah, and I think, I agree. But I think it should, should be on the website as to who are official members of the committee. That way, the community also knows, the public also knows who's on the, on the committees. And then I, as a person, as a chair of the committee, or a member of the committee, know who else is on the committee.
And we have never left that static before.
No.
But I do have a list of who is on each committee.
We do have it on the website, actually.
Yeah, it is, it is on the website, yeah.
Yeah, I had to check it today to find out who's on policy.
Yeah, I, I know it is.
Okay.
So in reading the language we have here, are we comfortable with the fact that yes, a board chair can be on a committee as long as they have been appointed to that committee, like everybody else has been appointed to a committee?
I don't have a problem with that.
I know, but I'm...
Didn't bylaws have a problem with that?
Yeah, that's what I'm sort of, I haven't really found where it says no.
If you look under committees, there's nowhere where it says no.
Right.
Under the, other than the board chair. And it, you know...
Where are you reading?
Okay, here's the question then. Robert's Rules of Regulations that we do follow, do we have to put something in the bylaws that overwrite the Robert's Rules?
That, that was my impression, BJ. And that was the information that we had gotten from Pietro. That if we want the board chair to be a member of a committee, whether it's one committee, all committees, or whatever, that we have to specify that the board chair can be a regular member of a committee. Not that they are a regular member of every committee, but that they are a regular committee, a member of any committee.
Okay, so then we do have to put something in here that says the board chair can be a full-fledged member of committees at voted time, or whatever.
Here's a little bit of an issue I have with that, and I am sorry to beat this dead horse.
Well, that's what we're doing here, so don't worry about it.
If, if we don't do it, and I, I speak to Sam's thing about folks coming in late and that kind of thing. But I think if you do it at the beginning of the year, or, or when we do our reorganization, anybody can be a member of any committee which they want. There's no limit to the number of members you have on a committee, or who it may be. So, you know, you're fine. If it happens later in the year, we just need to make sure that the committees officially get updated, so that if a person's decide, again, suppose, I, I don't attend negotiations, but I suddenly want to. And I want to be an official member because... No, I know, I know. This isn't a true story, believe me.
Okay, good choice of, of example.
But, but that could change the committee structure. If three people decide that they want to get involved in policy, then that can change the, the structure of that committee. Am I not right?
You are, but I'm not sure that we, that we don't, that...
I think we have two points, right? The first point is, can the board be a voting member of a committee, just like, can the chair be the same as any other member? Which we all seem to have a consensus on, that yes, the board chair can become a member, a voting member of a, and then the second question is, outside of reorganization meeting, is there a structure within where someone can become a voting member, and thus be part of the quorum, et cetera, of a committee?
Add some later.
Third question.
Hit me with it.
Is it necessary for the board chair to be on that committee, on every committee?
We're not talking about every committee.
Of the thirty-some-odd I did, only two of them, they were from large cities, I imagine they're large, only two of them had that in their...
No, yes, I don't think every committee has been the, the, I think that we've all agreed that it's not an ex officio of every committee. That the, the point that we all seem to be circling and landing on is that the board, the chair of the board may serve as a committee member as any of us would serve as a committee member, not on, not as a voting member on all the committees.
Right. But I'm okay with that.
That was all I was asking.
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Right, we're, we're saying that that's not what they're doing.
See, I, I don't...
Ex officio means the board chair could, unless you stipulate has to, it means by, by right of office, from that office, they are part of the committee, any committee they would be part of.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I'm fine with, with allowing the board chair or any other board member.
Hey, I, I, Bruce, I just feel like you haven't, you haven't finished what you're saying. I'm, I'm curious at why you think that would be a problem.
Why what would be a problem?
Um, having the board chair be part of committees.
I don't think it would be.
No, he was, she was asking Bruce.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know. I think where it all started, it started with me because it was violating Robert's Rules. And I don't think we need to be violating Robert's Rules. So if we want that to happen, it needs to be voted on. I don't see the reason it should happen, but if, if we want it to happen, it needs to be done officially. It shouldn't just be done because we did it before. It should be made part of, otherwise we could overrule quorum, we could overrule anything. And then we're not really following Robert's Rules.
I agree, which is why I'm sort of hoping to do this.
Yep.
Because I think right now, being an ex officio member means that I don't have a vote. I can attend all meetings, and anybody can attend all meetings. But we are in violation of that, because I am not only the, on the negotiation committee, I chair the negotiation committee.
Right.
So obviously, that's, that, without changing our bylaws to allow board chairs to be regular committee members of committees that they choose to be a member of at the reorganization, there's never a possible vote of a board, of a board chair on any committee, and we are in violation.
I guess you could interpret that way. I, I interpret it that, that when any board member says, I would like to be a part of the personnel committee, it doesn't matter whether you're the board chair or another board member, you can be a member, a voting member of the personnel committee. You, that can, it's done, done deal. I'm not saying...
Okay, I'm, I'm willing to, to just leave it at that.
Yep, yeah, because I have...
Most of the board that looked at, committee members were comprised of, everybody had like two committees, one or two committees. Some board chairs weren't on any committees. They felt their job was enough doing what they were doing. But everybody was on, usually at two committees they were on. And they had full voting rights and everything else.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, the board chair has the same rights as everybody else, according to our understanding of our bylaws, that they have to officially join a committee, and then they are a voting board member. Bruce, you're raising, you're nodding your head. Okay, all right. And at our next meeting, we will have a list of committee members, and we will go through it, and we will decide whether or not we are all in agreement on who's actually on the committees. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, and we're not making a change to the, to the, to the, after all this, no?
Not at this point.
Though, Maria, Maria did mention a potential change.
Oh, I'm, I'm talking about just the membership, not, not talking about which committee. Sorry, Maria, I wasn't, I wasn't ignoring the, the community engagement. Because I do think we should add that to our, our list. That's where we are now. We're looking at the committee list.
I can put a note in there, and you can pick up there.
Okay.
You can keep on going, but just, just an idea that we're a little past time.
Yeah, can, can we put on the note that we are discussing adding community engagement as an official board committee?
Will do.
So that it doesn't...
No. Yeah, it's not in the bylaws.
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely, go ahead, Bruce.
I found, I found a, according to Robert's Rules of Order newly revised, board may set quorum. Quorum should be approximately the largest number that can be depended on to attend any meeting. So if we have six people in a committee, do we think, you know, that means the quorum is going to be what, four? I mean, do we think that, that that's reasonable?
So Bruce, are what you're saying, that at, when we form our committees, that at that same point, we should be setting a quorum limit? Does that sound reasonable?
What we think is reasonable.
Well, yeah, I understand that. We shouldn't be setting a quorum that is unreasonable. Yes.
I think BJ talked about, our problem in the past has been getting people to the meetings.
Correct.
And not having a quorum.
But we could set it at two people.
If you set it at three, and one person was out, you've got a quorum.
Yep.
Yep, okay. I think we're beating this to death. But don't forget that thought, because the idea of setting a quorum is a very, is a, is a valuable one. Because we don't have to set it at an unreasonable limit. Thank you.
And we don't want to set it too high.
That was the unreasonable one that I was talking about? Okay. All right.
He needs to see two over there.
Thank you, Brian, you're keeping notes on this, this is my, okay. We will move on to the COVID dynamics update.
Sorry.
No, it's, it's all, if you don't talk it through, you don't ever talk it through.
So there's not a significant amount of new guidance to share on this. Dave sent an email to the community on January thirty-first, and then again on, or December thirty-first. And again on January second, on January second, he shared new information from the Vermont Department of Health that was an attachment sent out via email. For any reason anyone didn't get that, I'm more than happy to forward that on. Just speaking about what the current updates are from our state result, around isolation. I would just recommend to anyone who gets a call from our school nurses with dynamics changing so quickly all the time, just to grab a pen and write down exactly what our school staff says. Because we are really just, you know, we're continuing to work our hardest to evolve in a consistently changing situation. So far, we are doing great, and I just want to say thank you to all of our educators, who I know are sacrificing in their personal lives to really stay home to limit contact so that they can show up to work. And I know they've been doing that for years now, and it's really hard on them. We do have, you know, some staff out right now for various reasons, but everyone is just pushing hard to make schools still open for kids, and to make sure that kids are still learning. And, yeah, we're still, you know, we're awaiting updated guidance regarding positive cases in isolation. And we'll just keep plugging as we have and rolling with it.
And I'll, I'll throw one thing in there. I think Stephanie's still on the call. Stephanie was asking about tests to stay and our ability to offer that, and who can access that, and how they can access that. So two important things on that. There are, there are some releases that need to be completed to participate in that program. If, if folks don't have that information, they can reach out to a principal, they can reach out to any health office, they can, they can call up Jody, they can call up me, Brian, and we'll get you that. The other piece of that too, though, is capacity. We have been offering tests to stay when we have staffing available to do it. We have to have folks who are trained to do that. We have some incredible administrators who, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows this, but Maggie Ains up at Shrewsbury got trained, so she can do tests to stay, she has capacity. And I think Maureen got trained too, Maureen Fitzgerald Recker up at Timoth. So we're trying to get as many people in there as possible. Amy Ridlon, our head nurse, has worked really hard to get some part-time folks in using grant funding to LPNs and RNs, and get them trained, and have them working. We don't always have the supplies, we don't always have the staff. So what happens is, a, a small pocket might come up on Tuesday, and we have capacity to do tests to stay. And that's going to happen for seven or so school days, depending on the timing of identifying the case. Well, another case might pop up on Wednesday, and that's going to happen for seven or so days, depending on the timing of when that case actually happened, and we actually get the notification. All of a sudden, you have a couple of layers of tests to stay happening, we're out of capacity. So at any moment, you might get the call about contact tracing and being in close contact, and we may not have capacity, based on what has happened earlier on in the week. So we're, we're doing what we can when we can, and it's hard to guarantee that we can offer it to everybody. We, we felt it was important to offer it as much as we could, because that keeps, that keeps students in classrooms, that keeps teachers in classrooms, that keeps families being able to work, and I think that matters. I wish for everybody.
Yeah, can people access the testing outside of the school setting and have it still work as a test to stay result?
At this point, no. My understanding is there's conversation at the state level that that may be how the program shifts. And that we may not be doing tests to stay in-house. Let me, let me back up and say, conversation, this is not anything that has been decided or rolled out, or anything you're going to get an update on anytime soon. This is not happening right now. But it sounds like we may not be testing here, and testing might all be happening at home. We may just be distributing tests so that that can happen at home, because if folks can do it at home, we don't have a capacity problem of trying to do it all here.
As long as we have tests to hand out, it's all good.
Yeah, and it's, it's, in this COVID landscape, it's becoming very apparent that funding is available. Now supplies are actually available, where it was hard to get masks and tests for a long time. Now we've got a lot of masks and a lot of tests, we can't find the people. That's the toughest part of getting these things to work, is having the people. That's the toughest part of getting these things to work, is having the people. You hear that on the news all the time about unemployment and folks trying to, you know, find people to do good work. Good question. I think Stephanie may have a question if we have time to--
Sure. Stephanie, did you have something you wanted clarified?
Yeah, thanks. Okay. So I just wanted to say, it sounded like you said that you were testing in the school, but then I think I heard you say that actually the tests were being sent home?
No, not at this point. That's a discussion and that's something--
Oh, for the future.
Yeah, yeah. That's something that could potentially possibly shift and make it easier for us to offer tests to stay for more students.
Okay.
Yeah, good question. Very good question.
Thank you, thank you. And then I just wanted to volunteer my services for Mill River.
Yeah.
I am a nurse.
Awesome.
And I have done a testing for my organization.
Awesome.
Would be happy to volunteer, depending upon the time.
Yeah.
Any way that I can help, please sign me up.
Hey, can you email me, Stephanie?
I can.
It's B. Hill, B. H. I. L. L. That's awesome, thank you.
Yes.
Great. Anybody else on anything? Okay. We are now on, unless anybody else has any other questions on COVID? Okay. Other than the huge question of when is it going away? Board committee survey proposals. Lynn, I'm going to turn that to you.
Yep. You should have received in your packet a parent's survey for families who have left the Mill River School District. This is from the Ad-Hoc Committee on Student Retention. We put this together and -- because that was our charge, and so I sent it out. There's one change I just want to mention right up front on page two, where it says name, phone, and email. It's supposed to say optional there. I'll fix that. So what I -- what we on the Ad-Hoc Committee would like is for the board to consider adopting this, and then we would continue to meet with -- the Ad-Hoc Committee would continue to meet with administration and other folks who might be involved in terms of distribution, collection, and counting up numbers from these surveys. And that's a question, I know there's some HIPAA things in there, and we recognize that as well. And so that's why, at some point soon, we'd like to meet with some administration and say, "Okay, you tell us," because we, you know, we know there's HIPAA stuff, but, you know, I'm not a HIPAA expert. So I will set up a next meeting. I did not set that up yet, and we can discuss it at that point.
I have one question. Brian, how -- knowing our record-keeping, do we have information on families that have left?
Do we have--
Mailing information, things like, where did they move? Did they move? Did they not move?
I mean-- Yes, maybe. The challenge is, if folks have left district and moved, we probably don't have that updated address information, because they would come to the office. Well, let me back up. Sometimes they don't come to the office and we get a record request. So they may have moved and maybe notified us in a very, very, you know, emailed somebody, but not really done anything too official. We get a records request, so all we have on file is their old address. Or we may have their new address, it's possible, but I don't -- I think it's hard to guarantee that we've got good, solid contact information for everybody leaving.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
How many years back were you guys anticipating doing this? And then I'll be done with my--
Say that again.
How many years back were you planning on trying to have--
I don't think -- I don't think we're looking at going that far back, because I think, simply from what Brian said, it would be very difficult to get some of that information. I think we've figured, you know, maybe a year as best we can, and then we would continue it each year, so that, you know, then it's on a regular basis.
Can I throw one plug in? I would recommend trying to cast a wider net. I wonder if we're asking folks, "How are we doing?" I wonder if we shouldn't be asking Mark, "How are we doing?" I wonder if we shouldn't be asking Ken. I wonder if we shouldn't be asking all our students, you know? If we shouldn't be asking all our staff, all our parents, caregivers, you know?
Well, and I think--
That's my only thing that--
I think that's a valid point. And one other thing, and I'm sorry, BJ, I think Maria was going to speak to that, the Community Engagement Committee, and maybe that's what Sam was going to talk about, too, sorry. They--
If we do that, we hear from those folks before they leave.
Yeah. And I think that that needs to be done. I agree 100%. And I think that the Community Engagement Committee has put together a survey that they'll be presenting to the board, and we may decide that's all we need, I don't know. But I wanted the board to take a look at this.
Yep.
If you have any questions or concerns, then I'd like administration to take a look at it and let me know.
Okay. BJ, and then Sam.
If we have feedback for this, would it be best to give it to you, the email, or talk it up right now?
Well, we have a few more minutes, so talk it up right now.
Juan, I am very concerned about the data we get not being accurate. I can think of examples, you know, someone says they're leaving because of the flag, they go to another school that technically had raised the flag. I'm concerned about those types of data points in this thing. The other thing I really would like is, I'm always a big positive spin, and like, question two, you know, question two is, was you dissatisfied? I would really like to change that question two to more along the lines of, what could we have improved? What could we have done to keep you here? Type of questions, as opposed to, why'd you leave? What did you -- didn't you like? But what could we have done better? Just the tone, that's the one thing that I think I would get the feedback.
Okay. And I appreciate that, because I think, in looking at it, you know, it basically says, was dissatisfaction any part of your decision? That's not exactly saying, you know, what could we have done better? Kind of thing. I got you.
The number five does do that, doesn't it?
Hmm, I don't know.
Isn't that basically the same thing?
Sam, did you have a comment?
I'm kind of waiting till Bruce and Lynn feel that they resolved their point that they just--
Okay.
Yep. It is, and that's, again--
Bruce, I think that's a good -- five is a good question, but I don't think it helps answer, what could we have done to keep them there?
Yep, okay. And I would just say, if anybody, you know, look it over, if you see anything else, don't hesitate to email me, and I will set up another meeting of that committee. I wanted to sort of see how this went first, and we'll go from there.
So I would like, one thing is that either we change the parent guardian survey or just family survey for students who have left the district to include all the different families we have in our district.
And not everybody's a parent.
Correct. We have guardians, we have different levels of grandparents.
Grandparents, moms, aunts, uncles.
So it's a family survey for students, of students who have left the district.
Pick up.
Or parent guardian, et cetera.
Just say, survey for families?
Yeah, that's what you can do. You can note perhaps that you prefer, obviously right, it's not for the student to fill out about themselves.
Right.
So you want something to be effective, parent guardian, perhaps.
Parent guardian, yeah, okay.
Or family, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Sam.
Jody?
Just two quick things, and looking forward to a meeting to just, you know, talk more deeply about this. But one is, we have found that it is most effective when we're gathering data to start with the question of, what is our hope to do with that data? What do we want to know to be able to do better? What are we looking for? And the second piece is really just considering representational size of feedback. So for example, if we are able to go through paper files to find record requests for, you know, it is most typical that a record request comes directly from a school.
Right.
Not from the family.
Right.
So let's say that we are feasibly able to find 50% of those record requests in paper files and call those schools. Those schools would then need an updated record request to tell us where those people were living and their addresses, because those are for a certain -- those records, we can only interface with other organizations if there's a record request that says give and receive, and it's usually for a certain time. So if it was open, then we code-call and ask for that new address. If it was closed, we'd have to ask this other school to ask permission of the parents to give us that address, and then only administrators can have that, because under FERPA, the basic FERPA law is, we can only disclose things to people who have an educational interest within the district. And so I'm meandering, but the point is, if I had to guess, I'd say we'd end up with 30% of the addresses of people that transferred out in the last year after doing that legwork. Would that be enough of a representational size to give you the data you're looking for? And I don't know.
Could we -- and I love that the survey is to help us improve, because we have places we need to improve, absolutely. Does that tell us what we need to improve? You know, or, again, I'll go back to my plug, cast a wider net to get a better idea of what we really need to work on, you know?
Well, I appreciate it. I mean, that's what I'm -- this is what I'm looking for. We sort of built this in a vacuum.
Okay. No, but it's awesome, it's something we need to do. We need to find out what we need to get better on, and we have blind spots. You know, there are some things that I know I've messed up, but there are some things I don't know I've messed up necessarily. So we need to know that from other folks who interact in our schools in different ways and have that perspective.
And I very much agree, Brian. I'm hopeful that, you know, this can work in tandem with the survey that Community Engagement is working on. And in addition, for both surveys, another point that I'd like to make to amend on to Jody's point is, of that, right, like, keeping in mind whenever we're presenting these, that these are helpful things, and the response rate of that 30%, right? Like, if we're seeing such a small sample size, that it's, thank you for the feedback, and keeping that perspective of response rate in addition to the pool that that response rate even--
Okay. Crystal, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just a little confused by Jody's comment. I mean, I thought the intention of the survey was to determine why families are leaving our schools, not necessarily because they're moving. So I suspect the families who really want the feedback from are those that are still residing in their same home patient, but have chosen to make plans or utilize another school district. So I guess I didn't realize we would be reaching out to other schools to see where families have moved. I don't think that would be productive.
Okay, thank you, Crystal.
If they made that decision, then they're obviously not coming back to our district.
Okay, thank you.
Crystal, the only thing with that one, I'm wondering, and Jody, I'm kind of thinking of, how do we get this survey to them? If we don't know how to get this, how do we get a hold of them? If we know that they've moved, if they thought of something else? That's a bit of an older action.
I mean, from my perspective, that's a question we haven't answered.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't know if we need to talk about this right here and now.
No.
I mean, if you want to get feedback from the administration--
Yeah.
-- with your committee--
That's what we're looking for.
I think that's good, because we're starting to run late.
Yep.
And we have a lot to do.
Can I add in just a quick thing?
Two seconds.
Somebody says they're leaving? How long is it going to take you to press a button, send survey to last known address? Everybody's got to have their mail forwarded.
Some people have left a while ago. Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
We're working on it.
I just--
Usually, I mean, to be perfectly honest, I think most people, when they leave, because they're dissatisfied, they have not done it quietly. Just saying.
Thank you.
I think we understand.
I was just pressing a button.
Sometimes. Okay. Do you have what you need to make another, to move forward?
Sure. Let's move along.
Okay.
There you go.
Personnel, it's back to you again.
Yes. We met tonight, and I'll try to speak fast, but I know it's going to slow down. The board, there was board action requested, and I make a motion to approve a contract for Jessica Morgan, 1.0 Support Staff Administrative Assistant at Wallingford Elementary School.
So moved to the ORN.
Thank you, BJ.
I'll second that, Lou.
Okay, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? Okay. We are still looking for multiple positions. We'll leave it at that.
Can we congratulate Jessica?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And thank you for joining us.
Yes. Next, as I'm sure folks are aware, the superintendent, Mr. Oance, has resigned, and it is sort of the, well, it is the responsibility of the Personnel Committee to begin the process of looking at options in terms of that position. We discussed it, we discussed a couple of things. Number one would be establishing a search for superintendent with the expectations that they would come on board July 1. And in order to help us facilitate that, and I'll only speak for myself, but I wouldn't know where the heck to begin, in order to do that, we are hoping, and depending on how folks feel about it, what we'd like to do is ask the Vermont--
School Boards Association.
School Boards Association to aid us in putting together what that search may look like. It will cost us some money, but I think in the long run, and again, I'll only speak for myself, but it's a difficult, complex job, and they, the Vermont School Board Association has done it multiple times. And they have the expertise to make sure that we put things in the order that they should be and how they should be done. They don't make the decision about the superintendent, okay? They simply help us get together what we need so that we, as a community, literally, can choose, can make a choice in terms of the superintendent. We would, we want community members on that committee, administration on that committee, you know, board members, obviously, but I mean, it will be a good-sized committee, and I think there were at least six or seven board members in the search that David, when David was given the position. So what I would like is to make a motion that we contact the Vermont School Boards Association to tell them that we would like their assistance in conducting our superintendent search. How does that sound?
Yes, and I'm, and we authorize whoever needs to sign for that to sign for that.
To pay for--
Into a contract with the Vermont School Boards Association.
And I would like to second that motion.
Thank you. That opens it up for further conversation, for people that--
I would just like to say that I think that's a great idea. You know, the Vermont School Board Association, they have, I think they call it a toolkit, and it's very comprehensive, and I just think that makes sense.
Thanks.
It's one of the services they offer their members that, you know, that we can avail ourselves as a -- hi, Matt, go ahead.
I think bringing the School Board Association on to help with the search--
I think bringing the School Board Association on to help with the search is an excellent idea. Obviously, it's, they're going to be assisting us, but the way I look at it is we're a board of, we're a board of 11. And five of the 11 board members have been on this board for less than a year. And some assistance would be nice.
Any other comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of getting in contact with VSBA and deciding.
Entering a contract with.
And signing that, the motion to get in the, get in contact with the VSBA and sign a contract to aid in our superintendent search.
Good.
Close enough?
I'm fine. I think it says what we need to say.
Okay.
Can we see everybody? Okay.
Okay.
Yes, everybody. Yes?
Will it be a board member that comes off or designate name or?
I'm not sure, and I'm sure they won't not do it until.
This group, is board member or does designate name?
Sure.
Sure.
Sounds good.
That's good. Thank you. And then the second question, right?
Yep.
Is what do we do in the interim between now and July 1? We had some conversation around that. We didn't really reach any conclusion because we would like the input of the entire board.
Correct.
And feedback on ideas moving forward. Is that accurate?
Yes. And I don't know if, if the board feels more comfortable entering executive session to have this conversation, or, or if it's going to be general enough not to have that happen. It might be more sensitive to do that.
Yeah, I think it's a discussion for executive, executive session.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll move it to that.
Yes.
Okay. And then next Personnel meeting will be February early.
February early, okay.
Thank you, I'm done.
Okay. I'll, I'll make the, we do have an executive session in after agenda building, but if we could move it up to after committee reports. Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Policy.
Ooh, that's me.
Yes, it is you.
We had, God, we had a vacation in between our last policy meeting that just makes me not think what would have happened there. I think we actually had a really great policy meeting. A lot of good discussion went on. We're covering, actually, the public comments at board meeting policy right now. Bruce sent me an updated, kind of took everybody's input and made a revision, which will be going over at the next policy meeting, which will be happening next Tuesday, which will be a hybrid meeting. Looking forward to kind of reading that one through. There was a lot of, that's a long-term policy that we got a lot of input from the community members, both in person, in writing, and lots of discussion, so. Yeah, that's where we're at with policy, so anybody know next Tuesday.
Okay, thanks, Bej. Buildings and grounds, I don't know if you've met Doug.
Yeah, every, everybody, especially me, is jumping up and down with the new buses. They probably, they'll be here shortly in a week or so, something like that. We've had the two weeks of nobody in the building, other than some of the janitors probably doing some repairs that they had, some cleanup issues and stuff, but everything seems to be going fine.
Thank you. Community engagement, Liz, or Liz, Maria, sorry about that. Yeah, and Liz and Sam, feel free to jump in on this. So we, there, we've been talking about the survey that we'd like to do. Let me get those minutes up, sorry. So we would like to get that out as soon as possible because what we discussed in the first place was having that several times a year, having it in the fall, in midwinter, and then again in the spring. So we really, ideally, we could get it out. I'm not going to put a timeframe right now, it's not my place at this stage, but we just wanted to hear from the administration what would make it most useful, because ideally, this would be useful, I mean, going off what was said in that last discussion, like, what are we going to use this for? Like, leading with how, why do we need this and how can it be helpful? And I think definitely informs the board about, sorry, I'm finding the right tab so I can see you all again. It informs the board about giving a sort of a heads up, like, if we have this many people who seem, feel a kind of lukewarm about what Mill River is about, or whether we're achieving our goals, then that's something we need to look into further. It's not that, this is about getting people's impressions, this is not about getting hard information from anybody. Like, the data that we get is basically, it's a temperature check. It's not a, this is why this happened, because that, that starts to get us down the road of maybe more inaccuracy. So if we get a sense that people's impressions are, you know, great, or middling, or whatever, then we can be less looking to this. It's a sign for us and a sign for the administration, I mean, for everybody, but I think it's, this one's primarily for the board. And also, the other half of that was to offer information. So one very general question, how do you feel like, what's, what's your impression of how Mill River is doing right now, from your experience via your student or member? And the other part is, this is where you can go, this is community conversations, this is the committees that happen. These are the contact people that you might need to get in touch with about this and this, especially if they need to do with COVID protocol, or transportation, or sports, just things that people tend to have concerns and questions about. That information is part of the survey, so it's not just taking in, but it's offering out. Is there any, I, I feel like at this meeting was, we were, we were hoping to get a little bit of input, I don't know if Jody or Brian would like to weigh in on, on whether this seems like it would be helpful to leadership at all in any way. And we were also, I mean, for sending the survey out, we were going to depend on the school to do that, or the district to do that.
Yeah, we'd love to be part of the conversation, I think, because we need to know that information. We need to know how folks are feeling. And we need to know, you know, more specific than just, are you happy, are you unhappy? Or even, are you happy about academics, are you unhappy about academics? You know, we, we would be looking for information that is that, that impression information, but something that can focus our work. Do students feel challenged every day? If not largely, there's a problem, and that's something we can start employing some strategies to try and solve that problem. If, if we don't feel like academics are strong, then we start going, well, what about academics? Is, is, is it that students aren't being challenged? Is that the problem? Is it some other aspect? So I think there, there are definitely things that we, we would love to spend hours sitting down and talking about what would be useful to help us get better.
Absolutely.
That is super helpful, and the others, oh, sorry, Jody, go ahead.
Oh, no, I would just add to that, that, that we'd love to tie our goals to feedback and data, right? So talking about ways to tie all of that together to make sure that we have a clear roadmap of where we want to go, and then measures to guide how we're doing that.
And if we're not doing well, we better figure something else out.
Yeah, and just add, I love the idea of given and taking within that, just making sure that people have all the information they, they could need.
Thank you, that's, that's really helpful. Our intention was to take some input from you tonight and any else that you want to send us in the interim, take it to our next meeting, which is next week on Tuesday after, after policy. It'll be at 6:30 on Tuesday night, and yet to be determined whether it's in person or hybrid. But likely.
Would you like one of us to come to that meeting, Maria?
I was just going to ask if we can. Sorry, I'd love for you to come to that meeting, that would be super helpful.
We can, we can figure that out.
I may or may not. I am intending to be at that meeting in whatever capacity. Yeah, but it would be great. It would be great, and I mean, we're trying to balance ease of, of survey, because the simpler it is, the easier it is for someone just to click or check or something, to view as number of boxes possible, but also for it to give us the most information, so, and be most helpful to the broadest range of the district, so. And I think complimentary to the other survey, really. So, because it's about people who are here right now and how they're feeling. So that's that survey. And the other part, sorry, it's a little bit more than usual, but nature of tonight. The other part is the community conversations continue, and thank you so much to all the board members who've signed up for them so far. Not everybody has, but not everybody's sure that they're going to be, you know, on the board past February, so that's completely reasonable. At the next one, Sam and Len are signed up to be on January, Monday, January 17th. I am also there, but I am, we'll get to that in item 13. If there's somebody else who would like to take part in that, anyone who hasn't very often, it's really been a really rewarding experience for myself.
What time is that, Maria?
That's at 6:30 PM.
Okay, and that's virtual, right?
It's, it's a Google Meet. Yep, it's entirely virtual, no one needs to show up. Because it's, there's no forum, it's not a, a meeting where any action gets taken.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And I'm happy to attend to that one too, and as a community member. So thank you, and then I will just tell you right now, February, signed up are Sam and Len and Adrian. I mean, Sunday, did I say it? February, February 21st. So it's always the third Monday of the month. And really, again, like, please come. It's, it's a worthwhile effort to take part in, and we learn a lot from each other, and it has definitely affected how I've, how I've approached our meetings and how I've taken part in, how I've listened to people in a full board meeting, which is, we all speak a little differently and interact a little differently and, and feel more self-conscious and maybe more nervous, and that, that, that affects how we present what we're saying. And it makes it easier to listen to somebody in a board meeting who maybe has a lot of emotion, when I've had a conversation with them in a community conversation, because it, I think it humanizes it's all board members and community members. Thank you to the people. Is there anything else? No, I think we've covered it. Okay, good, thanks, Mom. Thanks. Negotiations is me, and we don't have anything to report, although we have been making progress. I'm hoping that the support staff had initiated contact and said that they wanted to start negotiating, but I don't believe we've had a date set up or even given to us from them on when they'd like to start.
Yeah, they haven't.
Okay, so we'll continue on with that, and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to, to finish up with the teachers soon, which would be great. Ad hoc committee updates, we had your, did you have anything to add? Okay. And Matt?
Finally, finally got around to scheduling the first ad hoc committee for the art display. It's been kind of a long time ago, coming. I had a few things going on this fall. I apologize to other board members, it took me so long. But our first meeting, I've talked to a couple of the committee members, will be January 12th at 5 o'clock, which is next Wednesday. There will be a warning sent out tomorrow. And so I will have the first official update next board meeting, but we're going to hit the ground running next Wednesday, so.
Thank you.
No problem.
Great.
It was my understanding I had signed up for that committee but didn't hear anything, is that still the case?
Uh, I'll check. I didn't see your name on the list, but I'll send you, I'll send you an email. Sorry about that, I apologize.
Who do you have, who do you have on there, Matt?
I had, the list that I had gotten, looking back at the September meeting minutes, was Andrea Hawkins, myself, Asha Carroll, and then you had said you wanted to be on it, so.
Okay, and now you have Sam.
Now Sam Green as well.
Okay, is anybody else?
Anyone's welcome, public's welcome. We're going to, we're going to try to accomplish a lot in a short time, so.
Okay, cool. And you're going to work with the art teachers and?
Yep.
Cool, okay. Now, this is a big one, finance. Go for it, Liz.
Good evening, everyone. Well, our first order of business is to approve payroll and pay orders. So for payroll this evening, I have a warrant dated December 16th in the amount of $6,381.41. I have a warrant dated December 17th in the amount of $606,813.76. I have a payroll warrant, excuse me, dated December 30th in the amount of $616,000, no, I'm saying it wrong, sorry, $613,659.61. And a warrant in, or dated December 30th in the amount of $4,331.67, for a grand total And for pay orders, I have from the general fund, a pay order in the amount of $119,866.1. Also from the general fund, a pay warrant in the amount of $16,751.20. From our after-school program, a pay warrant in the amount of $1,626.89. And from our lunch program, a pay warrant in the amount of $47,559.51, for a total of $185,803.61. From our school's activity accounts from Mill River, I have a warrant in the amount of $1,424.3. From Clarendon Elementary, I have, I'm sorry, I don't have anything from Clarendon or Shrewsbury. From TinMet, there is a warrant in the amount of $79.94, and there's nothing from Wallingford. So that total for student activity account pay warrant is $1,503.97. And I do move that we accept and approve these pay orders as presented.
Do you have a second? Yeah, you have seconds, Liz.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, who? BJ, Sam?
Matt.
Matt, sorry.
Matt, okay, so.
Take your pick.
I can't see a lot of people, so, okay, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of accepting and approving our payroll and pay orders as presented this evening, please raise your hand. Okay? Anyone opposed? And I cannot see people who are in the conference room.
You're all good.
You're good, yep.
All right, thank you very much. And let's see, so I don't have the agenda up, but I think I'm just going to segue right into our budget discussion.
Go ahead.
Does that sound all right?
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay, and do I have permission to share my screen?
You should.
Okay, let me, I have a bazillion tabs open, so just give me a sec while I queue some stuff up here. Okay, let me see if I can share my screen. Whoops, hold on, I jumped the gun on that.
She's gone.
Oh, dear.
Yes, I didn't see the notification, she accidentally left the meeting, so I expect her popping in.
She is right there again.
Sorry about that. Can someone else actually do the slideshow?
Liz, do you want to share it with me? And I will. Brian said that.
Please, thank you. So pause, bear with me for one moment, please. So it's just a quick slideshow, it's really not that long, it just gives people a visual, and then that way I don't keep, because I'm going to do that again, right?
Yep.
This is an old dog. I'm going to do that again, so. Send this off to Brian. All right.
Can she email it to all of us later on?
Okay, so Brian, you should have that slideshow now.
Got it.
And I got to pull up my notes, so I'll wait for you to share that. Great, thank you so much. All right, so you can go ahead and go to the next slide. Okay, so, good evening, everyone. As you know, we have been working very hard planning the fiscal year '23 budget. And we are pleased to have arrived at a budget that everybody can agree on. And the expenditure budget for fiscal year '23 is down 1.37% over last year. Increases to the budget resulting from cost shifting mandated by Act 173 of 2018, which requires reducing paraeducator support and requires cost reductions for taxpayers, were offset by reductions that do not impact district program offerings. And I just want to have a look at, okay. I think you can go to the next slide. Actually, no, go back to that slide, sorry. Sorry, it's hard to toggle, huh? The fiscal year '23 expenditure budget features pay increases for staff and continued investment in our pre-kindergarten programs. Okay, so now you can go to the next slide and basically just toggle through. Well, actually, I'll stop here. So, we are going to do a more in-depth explanation of how tax rates are arrived at for town meetings. But this is a really nice graphic that I got from the Public Assets Institute website. So you can go to the next slide. And just kind of, so basically, the next four slides also from the Public Assets Institute. So from fiscal year '18 to fiscal year '19, the Mill River Union Unified School District per pupil spending moved from the fourth quintile, so if these are quintiled, the fourth would be here. We moved from the fourth quintile, or the second rung on a five-rung scale, to the middle quintile, or the third rung, the center rung, on a five-rung scale. And the fiscal year '23 budget maintains that status. So, Brian, if you just want to kind of go through each town, these graphs give you a really nice visual that kind of show you that information. And you can, I think it's not on there. I can share that website with everybody who wants to see it, because it's really, it's an interactive map. So, anyway, does anybody, did everybody get a chance to look at the budget? I don't know, did we share that out with everybody?
I don't think Stan did. I think we were expecting to present it tonight.
Oh.
At just a...
I'm sorry, I thought that was going to go out in the board packet.
I don't think Stan sent it.
I'm just realizing that it didn't. Okay, so, is that something, why don't I share that out?
Yes, and could you share your presentation too?
Yes.
For people to look at?
Yeah, I'm sorry, so I thought, so Brian, you can stop sharing. So, yeah, my presentation is very much abbreviated from Stan's numbers, but, I'm sorry, I made the assumption that that would go out with the board packet. So I will send out the board, the budget summary from Stan, because you all need to see that. So, budget summary.
Liz, I'll share the presentation with the board, because I have it up now, if that helps.
Perfect, thank you so much, that is helpful. So, Brian will share the presentation. And basically, you know, have a look at the budget summary from Stan, it's very comprehensive. Just, without seeing that, I'm sorry, again, I came into this meeting thinking everybody would see it, but I'm just realizing that that wasn't shared out. So, does anybody have any questions without even having seen that? We can discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, what I can ask, that we make sure that everything goes out tomorrow at the latest, because we will be scheduling a special meeting for next week to vote on the budget. And since we won't have, we'll have to be able to do, you know, something to refer to and to be able to study in time for that special meeting, which we will have to include some discussion time. Stan, is that?
Yeah, I'm going to, I can send that out right after this meeting.
Stan, what would you like to say?
Well, I can send out tomorrow, I can send out the, you know, a summary of the budget and also a detailed budget, which will be, you know, line by line for expenditures for each department and location.
Okay.
So you'll, so you'll have the opportunity to look at the summary and then also look at the detail.
So Stan, you're going to send that out?
Yeah, I can send that out tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate that.
Okay, and we will have to have a special meeting for, to be in time, is that correct, Stan?
Correct.
Because we won't have time?
Yeah, Dave was looking to get this, yeah, to get in line, yes, right next week.
Yeah, so I can, so basically, there is a forty-day window for our annual meetings that open Saturday, so it opens Saturday, January 15th. So we want to have the fiscal year '23 budget and warning approved no later than Friday the 14th, which would require that we schedule a special meeting for this, for this purpose on the 10th, in order to meet this deadline.
Okay, so...
Or five attempts.
And an invitation will go out for that meeting, and hopefully enough of us will be able to attend. It will be virtual, so.
Makes it easier.
Yeah.
So do we want to go ahead and schedule something for the week of the 10th?
Yes. I was thinking, Monday is a night that most people don't have anything, isn't that correct? That's sort of our special meeting night? Brian, feel free to jump in on the February.
Say that again.
Monday, the 10th works for a special meeting? For budget?
Yes.
Okay, and so an invitation should go out to everybody?
This is Andrea, and I will not be able to be present.
We're going to do it virtual.
I will be...
Oh, you mean not present at all? Okay.
Not present at all, I will be finally doing Christmas with my sister.
Oh, well, that sounds much more pleasant. I don't blame you. Okay. I think we have meetings on Tuesday night. Wednesday night has a meeting at 5 o'clock. We could do it after that, if that's easier for people. We could do...
I have a conflict that way.
Okay, why don't, Andrea, is it okay if we just do it on the 10th?
Yeah, that's fine. Can I just, you like, send my note?
Absolutely, I was just going to say, if you have concerns or things that you want to clarify, either get ahold of Liz, or Stan, or myself, or Brian.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, all right.
What time?
Um, how about 6 o'clock? Is that too early? Want to go 6:30? I'm looking for...
Six, okay.
Okay.
Six works.
6 o'clock, on the 10th. You'll get an invitation.
And I would just like to tell folks now that if anybody has any questions with me tomorrow morning and the 10th, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to explain anything that I can and anything I can't stand hand.
Always have Stan. Okay.
You can include all of us in the email, just include all of us.
Or, yeah, I'm going to be less available than Stan, because of what I do, but...
He's the final say, anyway. Okay.
And then the only other thing I will say, and I should have said this previously, was that our next meeting of the finance committee, I don't even know how relevant that is now, but is planned for the fourth Monday in January, so January 24th at 5:00 PM, locations should be determined.
Okay. Thank you, Liz. Since we, now we are at Agenda Item 13. No, not yet. Okay.
No, because I thought we had a executive session.
Oh, thank you. We were going to do it, but we already had gone sort of beyond committee business, so I lost my train of thought. Thank you.
We can do that, if I'm dreading it, but...
No, no, why don't we do that ahead of time? Thank you. So, the board is going, I'm asking for the language of an executive session to discuss personnel.
Appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee.
Of which premature public knowledge would...
So that is under the bucket of not requiring?
That language?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Could I have a motion for that? And then we'll have a motion. Okay, thank you, Matt. And Len seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of entering an executive session for the reasons that Jody said about employment and not wanting to discuss it in public. Okay, thank you. And now we need a motion to actually enter executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Len. Any discussion? Don't see anything? All in favor of entering executive session? Okay, thank you.
We are out of executive session at this time, and we had a discussion, an executive session, about what to do in terms of an interim principal, since we are going to do a full-fledged...
Superintendent.
Superintendent, yeah, thank you. Some things never change.
It's late.
We will be doing a full-blown search with the Vermont School Boards Association for a superintendent that would be starting July 1. So the question that came up is, what do we do between now and then? And at this time, I would make a motion that we choose?
Announce.
Doesn't need a name.
A point, a point.
A point.
A point.
The Assistant Superintendent, Brian Hill, as the interim superintendent. So I make that motion. So that would mean, thank you, BJ seconded. And just so folks know, we did talk to Brian. Okay, no discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? I'm staying. Congratulations, Brian.
And thank you, Brian.
Not sure that's the word, Len.
Fair enough.
We wish you good luck.
I'll do it again.
We know that. Thank you very much. I'm done.
Okay. Maria, we are on 13.
Hey, that's my show. Okay, there's been a lot going on tonight and today. It's been a big day. I have a little statement to read, so I don't get distracted. So, here it is. My professional commitments have increased by 150%, and my personal situation has changed significantly since at the candidate forum in February. I assured everyone I could handle the time and attention required to serve, and subsequently was re-elected to the board. I regret to say that as of this meeting, I will be stepping down from the Mill River School Board in order to focus my job, jobs, and family. It has been a privilege to have the trust of my community to contribute to the work of district leadership, and to do it alongside most of these board members and those who have since moved on to other things. I would like to especially thank my community of Wallingford who elected me and who continues to stay engaged via public comment and community conversation. Like to thank Mill River community members who show up at community conversations and public comments. I want to thank George Ambrose, who sat next to me on my very first board meeting and explained what was going on and who is who, which was the full amount of orientation that was available to me at the time. I want to thank Tammy Hefron and Adrian Raymond for their leadership. Dave Younts for his leadership, his attention to communication, and his willingness to learn and grow over the years he and the board have been working together. I would like to thank fellow board members and their continuing commitment for supporting our school to do the best by all of our students, so each can head out into the world from Mill River as well-equipped and competent as they are able. Nearly every member of the board has demonstrated their priority is our students. Thank you, especially and above all, to our teachers and our paraeducators who work directly with our students. This was a very hard decision. I take my commitment to my town and the Mill River community very seriously. I apologize to those in the community who I have disappointed by settling down. I will continue to support public education every day in my work and as a parent of Mill River students. Please come to community conversation.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you, Maria.
We really do. That does bring up the fact that we will have to fill Maria's position. The town of Wallingford will have time, because she resigned so early, to put an open ballot position on, so that we don't have to, you know, do any filling after the fact. But we will have to fill her position. And we will put out some kind of a process for that in the coming week or two, so that we can act on it quickly, so that we have somebody in place for the next few weeks, or a few months, because it's going to be a very busy few months. I'm anticipating I'll send around a notice to be sent out to the communities for people that are interested in filling that position. And hopefully, at the next board meeting, we will be able to appoint somebody. I told, I informed the Wallingford Select Board that we were going to have news for them in some form, or in some way, tomorrow. So I will tell them that there is an open position, and that we would like their advice on who to fill it with. And they have a meeting, I believe, on the 17th, so they will have time to give us their advice, and that will leave us time to act on the 19th. So hopefully, we will have somebody in place at that time. So if people are interested, who are listening, you know, submit your name, but something will go out somehow. Even though Doug is sending messages. So that's all I have to say on that. I'll send the notice out to the board members to review before I send it. I'll put it on Front Porch Forum, I'll put it in whatever venue. I think we probably have to put it, I don't know if we could put it in the Herald, that we're trying to fill it, or? I don't know, we'll talk about it. Okay, that's all that I have on that. If anybody else has anything else. Maria, my heartfelt thanks. You've done a great job, and we'll really miss you.
Sure, here.
Yeah, absolutely. So we are at transact other legal business. I think we've transacted enough. What do you all say?
I got one question.
Sure, Bruce, go ahead.
I had heard, this is coming from a coach of girls' basketball. I had heard that the eighth grade girls had then moved up to varsity level, and if that's the case, I think it's a dangerous move. If it's not the case, I hope, because you could apparently hurt an eighth grade girl playing at St. on a basketball court.
Okay. All right, thank you, Bruce. Anybody else?
I just think that we should acknowledge that before we went into executive session, Lacy Lampier was on our meeting as one of our student reps.
And we had two notes, and I was supposed to call on our student reps. And if you will see from when I get to agenda building, it will include student representation comment, so that I don't forget them, because I didn't recognize the name, and...
Yes, I pulled up everybody, and she was...
And tried to, you know, to remind me, and she gave me a note, and then we kept...
Which she showed me.
Which I showed Len, and then we both forgot about, and I apologize to our student reps, but they will be called upon specifically at the next meeting. But thank you, Andrea.
We're all gone.
I know, they left.
Thank you, Lacy, for just attending and being here.
Well, thank you all of them. I mean, it was...
All three.
All three were here, and, you know, it's hard enough trying to figure out who's on the screen. I didn't read the names, I'm really sorry. And I apologize to them. But I will, as part of agenda building, I had review of committee membership and quorum numbers, that we would add the goals to that meeting, and that we would... numbers, that we would add the goals to that meeting, and that we would ask student reps for input. So it will go on agenda building. I don't have anything else to put on agenda building. Does anyone else?
Do you want to squeeze in the presentation, Part II, about academic support systems?
How long was that, like 20 minutes? Half an hour, 40 minutes?
So we have two people coming in, each prepared for 10 minutes each, so it's 20-minute presentation.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Right, so that'll...
I mean, I don't want to sort of lose the train of thought, that would be great. Okay.
I just thought of something, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. Can you remember that?
Board goals.
Yes.
Do we need to set up another meeting, or?
Well, that's true. Do we want to try and meet beforehand again? I mean, I think we're probably all getting a little bit meetinged out right after the holidays, so if we could either put it off for a meeting, or we could put it on for 20 minutes on the next agenda, and just at least do incremental something, and then get back to meeting for an hour?
She could try to chip away at it.
Nice, to the next meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, the next month, in February? Because I think probably the superintendents are just going to start, it won't be at first, because, you know, once you, you know, there has to be time for people to apply and all that kind of stuff. So there won't be anything going on hugely right ahead, you know, right at the first part, but it's going to, it will suddenly cascade, I think.
Looking forward to it.
Good. Glad to hear it. Okay, so if nobody has anything else for agenda building, we've already had an executive session, we are at 18. Just adjournment. Any interest in adjournment? Okay, I think by consensus, we are adjourning. Thank you very much for a very long meeting, but we had a lot to cover, and I again apologize to our student reps, I really feel bad.